King bolts, cable holes need to be added and the mud and debris needs to be cleaned from the trash enclosure. Those need, that needs to be added in and one and two on solid waste that's on the Richard report needs to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time I'll be opening this up to public hearing. If you want to make a comment on this item, please come up. Seeing none, I will close public hearing.
Mayor, just one quick comment and we certainly concur with the, with that change in conditions that are recommended by staff.
Thank you. Okay, so hearing no other public comment, I will seek a motion. Councilman Rapsin.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. A quick question, not that it's relevant actually. Will there be food served at the end of the, when you reopen?
Yes, we will have a restaurant and there'll be so, serve, food served in the location.
Good food?
Hopefully, it's very reasonably priced.
Then I will make a motion. We approve this item with all staff's recommendations.
And we have a second. Call for the vote. And that motion passed. Thank you.
Mayor Council, thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, item, there you go. Item number nine, consideration of variance case number V-15-001, Haven Lane Storage, to reduce the required setback of buildings from a residential zone boundary line from five feet to zero feet. The project is located at 300 West Haven Lane in the light industrial planned unit development zone, IR-1 PUD, and Mr. Seacrest will explain that item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. KT Legacy LLC rezoned this property at 300 West Haven Lane last year to light industrial planned unit development. The Town Wash Storage PUD included a set of design standards to guide the eventual development of the property. The owner is now in the process of obtaining site plan and architectural review, approval for a self-storage complex on the site. Again, here's an air photo showing the site. Whoops, just back up, there we are. Just to the east of Town Wash and east of that site is Bunker Vale Irrigation Property, BLM land, all of this to the east and the south is in the floodplain. This is a four acre site that over the years owners have struggled trying to figure out a use for it. There have been various commercial projects approved. It was downzoned some years ago to residential RE3 after being commercial and the council at time allowed the owner a couple of years to get the commercial project going even though it was owned residential. It never came about because of the turn in the economy, but the previous owner was successful in bringing in a lot of fill to the site and getting FEMA to approve a letter of map revision on their floodplain map, so it's out of the floodplain. When the request was brought in last fall to rezonate, we didn't think it made sense to keep it residential. It's not really an ideal residential site. The flooding potential is significant all around it. We've seen it in the past in 2010 and 2005. We thought there had to be a better use. The owner was still, of course, trying to recoup or get a return on their investment. He brought up the idea of a self-storage unit, RV storage. We thought, well, this might be low impact enough to fit in a neighborhood, also provide services to some of the surrounding residential areas. So we suggested that rather than just zone it light industrial, it ought to be done as a planned unit development. And within that PUD for this site, limit the uses from what would ordinarily be allowed because there's a lot of industrial uses in IR1 zone that probably would not be suitable at this location. So there was a set of design guidelines that were adopted as a part of that rezoning, part of that PUD, and it limited the uses to storage uses, office space, some equipment storage, things of that nature, but again fairly low impact kinds of uses. So anyway, back to this site. What they're proposing is a site plan that looks like this. You've got storage units all the way around in this area, access here from Haven Lane kind of in the center of the property. There's a manager's dwelling unit here, about a 1,300 square foot home and 500 square foot office and garage in the back. These are all self-storage units and then RV storage at the back under these kind of lean-to covers. Now, the design standards that they contemplated, they wanted to have a zero lot line. In other words, the building's placed right on property line as, as we have in some other commercial zones. At the time the standards were approved, nobody realized that there was a conflict between two of their standards. Their side yard setback says zero, but one of the other standards says, well, it has to be five feet away from a residential zone boundary line. This happens to be a residential zone boundary line because this is the RE3 zone over here. So that's the reason for this request of a variance. They're asking to vary from that requirement, the rationale being that, again, this property is all in the floodplain, it's not likely to develop. Having the buildings back onto the property line forms a screening wall for the, you know, around the perimeter of the project instead of setting the buildings back, having a dead space of five feet and then still having to put up a fence or wall. And these are some of the renderings that were submitted to show kind of a concept of how the buildings would look. They are metal buildings but have some kind of a textured exterior, so it almost looks stucco. Okay, there, just another view looking back the other way. And then that's the manager's unit, office and garage in the back. And then the RV storage, which is, as you saw from the site plan, is kind of at the back of the site. So that's the request. Our recommendation is to open the public hearing for comment and approve the variance request, allowing the zero setback on the side.
Thank you. So at this point I will open up public hearing. You have comments to make on this item, please come up and state your name. Seeing no comments, we will close public hearing and I'll open it up to council for Councilman Haven.
I don't have any questions or comments. I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other.
Go ahead.
We are moved that we approve a variance-15-001 with all staff recommendations.
Second. And we have a second call for the vote. And that motion passed. Thank you. We will now go to item five, which was on the consent agenda, and that is consideration, which we have removed, consideration of approval of requests for qualifications, the RFQ, for the design build procurement of exit 118 and Lower Flat Top Drive, I-15, Pioneer Boulevard with possible action. Mr. Tanner.
Mayor, members of the council, I need to make two minor modifications to the RFQ process or document on page 18, section 1.20, federal requirements. We need to strike out at the bottom, last sentence, Buy American Requirements, and replace it with an additional sentence stating that the project is subject to Clark County prevailing wage rates and Buy America requirements. That needs to be added in. We are not required to have Davis Bacon rages, rates or DBE requirement is not on this project. On page 20, on the procurement schedule, we need to delete the best and final offer due 6/23. We need to delete City Mesquite Approval of Contract Notice of Award 7/18 and replace with City Mesquite Authorization to Negotiate on 7/18. We need to delete the notice to proceed at 8/11/15 and replace with notice to proceed late August or early September. And those are recommendations that have been made by the different agencies that have reviewed the document. And I believe with those changes, we should be ready to issue that document tomorrow, February 11th. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions, council? Councilman Rapsin.
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion.
Please.
Move to approve a request for the, a request for qualifications, RFQ, for the design build procurement of exit 118 and Lower Flat Top Drive with all of staff's additions, deletions and modifications.
Second.
We have a second call for the vote. And that motion passed. Thank you. Item number 10 is discussion and possible action regarding the City of Mesquite's agreement with Mesquite Regional Business Incorporated, MRB, and possible action. That is an item that I've petitioned along with Councilman Haven. Let me make a few comments about it first. We have an MRBI contract on the agenda tonight for discussion. There's nothing to do at this time with legal issues, staff issues, open meeting laws or other related issues, but we do have budget hearings coming up very shortly, and this is an item obviously that impacts our budget. It's imperative, I think, that we have a clear understanding of what the council wants to do so that we have no unintended surprises at the time of budget hearings when we formalize our budget. We have several options to look at. As a council, if you see some other possibilities, please feel free to state and discuss them. And I'll just mention some of the options that I looked at. And one of the options is to renew the contract with discussion later on. Another option is to do nothing whatsoever. Another option is to reduce the funding but renew. Another option would be to cancel the agreement with the required notice as the contract There are other options available that could be discussed, and each option, of course, has its pros and cons. And I will open this up after council discussion. I think that would be the appropriate place. Am I correct? Okay.
Question, Mayor.
On this item, thank you. So at this point I will, I will open up the council for any discussion they'd like to have on this item.
You want public hearing?
No, it would be public, it can be public comment.
Public comment.
Yeah. Yeah, so we do have public comment on this item. It would be the same as any other public comment. If you're interested in coming up and make a comment, you would state your name and keep it to three minutes, please.
Mayor Littman, council members, my name is Keith Capuro. I'm a resident of Reno, Nevada until March 16th, and then I'll be moving full time out here in Mesquite. I'm also a partner of Deep Roots Medical, and we were recently one of MRB's recent customers. And I can't tell you what a pleasure and what an influence they had on us coming to Mesquite. You know, some of the things they did, they set up countless meetings, including meetings with all of you folks as well as other businesses and utilities in the community that were key to us making a sound business decision. Gay helped us with a lot of the community demographics and data we used for our state She provided us with a ton of information, data and fees as far as tax structure and other things and information we needed to make sound business decisions. When we needed information, we got it fast. We literally, over a two to three month period, exchanged hundreds of emails between myself and my partner, Ryan Breeden. They were always available, weekends, late at night, it didn't matter. They were always there to answer our questions. The job fair was a great bonus for us. We were always concerned about what the workforce out here was going to be, and at the, at the job fair last week, we received over 200 applications of, from candidates that were interested in working for us. And I think one of the things that they do that maybe you guys don't see is they've also introduced us to several other businesses in the community that we will either be doing business with or have, or are doing business with, and I think that that's a great benefit for you guys to consider. Most importantly, they saved us time. We were under a tremendous amount of time constraints with our state application, and the amount of time they saved us and, and, you know, the, MRB made it possible for us to seriously consider Mesquite as our home. So in my opinion, it's, it's a, it's a program that's money well spent. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Ellisstad. I'm a private citizen. I attended a lot of meetings about three years ago when the council was trying to understand at that time where economic development in Mesquite was going to go. I, I watched the birth of Mesquite Regional Business, and I can tell you, I now know why I don't have children. If, I have one question that I would like an answer from at least one person that's going to vote on this measure. One question. If not this, then what? If you shut it down now, before the three years that you all said, or most of you said it would take to make this a viable operation, if you shut it down now, Mesquite will, and I hate to be draconian, but Mesquite is likely not going to have any viable economic development for at least five to 10 years. There is no one, and I mean no disrespect to anyone on city staff, I love them all, but there is no one inside these walls who is qualified or educated or has the experience that the professional that was hired to run this organization has. When was the last time in prior economic development efforts, when it was in-house, when did you see anyone from the governor's office down here talking to Mesquite about economic development? I don't remember once. Tom Skanky, who is the CEO of the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, he's been up here. So I know, I'm sure the commenters are going to love this. If nothing else, MRB has put, has made people understand in Las Vegas and Reno that Mesquite is actually in the state of Nevada. So there's an accomplishment. You guys promised three years. You promised three years. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Ms. Stockman has been on the job for two years. She succeeded last week in getting 20 businesses to do something together. That's a major achievement. I know that's not exactly on her charter to do that, but she did it. Please give it another year. Thank you.
Mayor and council, my name is Ryan Breeden. I'm a partner and also a manager in Deep Roots Medical. Partners with Keith, and I just wanted to come and just tell you a little bit about my experience with, with MRBI. So, I mean, for me, it came down to two things really, and one I'll say is it was the data, the information, the analytics and assessing risk. Back in June and July, when we were considering Mesquite as a home, it was, the waters were muddy politically and legally. So, you know, Gay was our first kind of face and person we worked with, so it was nice to have that reassurance that Mesquite was a friendly place to do business, so. And then throughout that feasibility period, you know, some of the questions we would ask Gay were, are not simple questions. I mean, they were, you know, complex questions, and sometimes we'd ask 20 of them. So, you know, questions such as what does it cost to upgrade our power? You know, that's not a question that you can typically, you can't answer that in five minutes. So like Keith said, it came down to time and, you know, I don't know if we would have ultimately ended up here without Gay. It's hard to say, but she had, she had a huge part in us making this home. So just a couple of specific things that, you know, she helped with was identifying taxes, fees, the labor force, employment statistics, power, water, other utilities, law enforcement questions, you know, setting meetings with Mr. Seacrest and Ms. Woosley. Goes on and on, so. And then she's been great, you know, continuing support, so I guess I thank you for providing that service. So thank you.
Mike McGreeer, Mesquite, nine years. First of all, I'd like to say something about the memo that I sent to you earlier. I had a brief conversation with Councilman Haven, and he assures me that he never had any comments with the MRB about the subject that I addressed in there. Since that information came secondhand, I accept what he says. Well, first of all, I've, I've been in government for more than 45 years at the local, state and federal level. My concern is not with Gay. My concern, as you know, is strictly with the way the MRB was structured. Had you gone out with a bid and evaluated competitive sources, I probably wouldn't be here. But you didn't do that. You gave money to three individuals who claimed they had the qualifications you needed. They set up an organizations as, an organization as a 501(c)(6), as I've told you numerous times. I have serious questions about whether they have in fact the characteristics of a 501(c)(6). You have spent two years and more collaborating with them as if they have. I've told you in the memo that I sent you why I think that's a concern. I strongly urge you, if you do, if you don't do anything else, to get the IRS involved and have them tell you what I've told you in the memo. And if you wish to continue with that, knowing that they may not be what they say they are, so be it. But I got to tell you, this Clive and Bundy approach to governance, in which you just simply ignore the federal law and go and do what you want to do, is not an acceptable, acceptable way of doing, of doing governance. Again, had you gone out and bid this thing properly, wouldn't be here, but there are serious questions. You have the memo on it. I strongly suggest you do something about it.
Mayor and council, my name is William Finn. I'm a resident of Mesquite, have been for the last two years, store manager of Star Nursery here in Mesquite. I'm in support of the MRB. I wasn't in the, involved in the process of logistics on getting it here, but I can tell you throughout the last year and a half, almost two years we've been open, they've been an asset to our company and continue to be. So I just want to let you know that we're definitely in support of the MRB and wish to see them continue doing the good things that they do. With that being said, if they were to be gone, who would take their place? Who would be there to help out the businesses, bridge that gap between businesses and whatever entities they need to get involved with in order to get their companies up and running as quickly as we did? Thank you.
Good evening, city council and mayor. John Williams, resident of Mesquite. Sent you all a memo earlier today outlining my feelings and thoughts. Two years ago, over two years ago, there was a lot of public discussion about MRB, and one of the major concerns of the citizens that expressed concerns were this is going to be a member organization, it has to be, it's a 501(c)(6), it has to be a member-supported organization. It's not what it's done, but that was a concern. Is this business going to compete with the Chamber of Commerce for its functions? Is there room for the Chamber and MRBI? Two years later, Chamber is struggling. The MRB is doing functions that should be the Chamber's. A job fair for existing businesses, for the businesses that are here that are members of the Chamber? That's not what we hired MRB for. MRB was hired to perform a contract, which was to bring new primary jobs to Mesquite for people to be employed here and to bring new businesses to Mesquite to provide employment and services. Those have not happened. So now they're doing the Chamber's work. Chamber struggles. Chamber works its rear end off because they have to raise every dollar they use to spend to pay it, pay their employees and to do their job from their member-supported organization, a legitimate 501(c)(6) organization. MRB, they get a couple hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, $190,000 a year from you, from the city. They don't have to worry about getting members. They need the members, they should be member-supported because that's what a 501(c)(6) has to be. Everybody ignores that, and they just go on down life saying they're a 501(c)(6) without being member-supported. The legitimate 501(c)(6) struggles while the Chamber imposes themselves on the job and the functions that the Chamber should be doing, that MRBI imposes on their functions. There isn't room for both. There wasn't room for both. What would happen if MRB was gone? I would hope that the city wouldn't just say, we don't need this. I would hope you would do what over 70% of the municipalities in this country do, and that is have an economic development function within the city. Hire the right person. Maybe Ms. Stockton is the right person to do that, but having it outside of the government and outside of the control of the people that pay for it is the wrong path.
Seeing no other public comment, I'm going to open this up to council. Didn't see you back there for a moment.
Sorry about that. Dave Bennett, 320 Joseph Street. It actually feels a little better to be on this side of the dais than that side. I get to go, when I'm done, I get to go sit back down, be anonymous again. I've only been associated with MRBI over the last three or four months. Prior to that, it was just, you know, what I spoke to the, some of the founding members about and talked to some of the board members about and so forth. But over the last three or four months, I've got some more information about them. And I stand here with a little bit of a unique viewpoint with regards to economic development because I actually have a perspective of economic development going all the way back to the 90s. So I've seen, I've seen... seen, I've seen some of the different things that we've tried. The city, let me go through some of them.